...provides an opportunity for citizens of all ages and backgrounds to celebrate and discover Albany's unique heritage. And now, therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Historic Preservation Month. And I encourage all citizens to take time this month to appreciate Albany's many historic resources and to participate in activities celebrating our heritage. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this thirteenth day of May 2015. And we do, in our packet, have a lot of events that are scheduled for May. It is just amazing, almost every day there is an event scheduled. So with that, we have a very special presentation. This is our annual 2015 Historic Preservation Awards. And Shawna Adams, one of our planners, and she'll be coming up to talk about our recipients this year.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. My name's Shawna Adams. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department, and I assist with the management of the city's preservation program and staffing and Landmarks Advisory Commission. This is my first time before you, and I'm here because each year the Landmarks Advisory Commission honors community members whose commitment, leadership, and investment in Albany's heritage merit special recognition. And this is part of their annual Historic Preservation Month celebration activities. This evening, the mayor will be presenting three awards to individuals and organizations the Landmarks Advisory Commission would like to honor. And before inviting the award winners up to receive their awards, I'd like to provide a brief introduction and share a few PowerPoint slides to highlight their achievements. And I realize now, this is not open, so let me get... So the first award goes to Oscar and Tamelin Holt in recognition of their exterior rehabilitation work they have done on 425 First Avenue. Oscar and Tamelin have transformed what was once an unused and neglected space in the heart of downtown Albany by opening the Natty Dresser. And this next slide shows photos of the interior and exterior view for improvements for the Natty Dresser. And to illustrate the transformation, I'll show you the next slide above. Here are photos of the interior and exterior now through the Holt's historically sensitive rehabilitation. What was once a barrier and detractor to downtown is now showcases Albany's historic character and adds to its vitality. With that, I'll invite Oscar and Tamelin to come up and receive your award.
They're not here.
I think they keep the shop open until seven, isn't it? So they might have gotten delayed with the customer, which is wonderful if they did.
I'll make the... We will. So this evening's second award... Well, you know what? Before I go back to the second award, let's see if I can go back. I want to say one more thing and note that in honoring the Natty Dresser, the Landmarks Commission also gives special acknowledgement to Oscar Holt for his broader contributions. Oscar's been, for many years, he's been an active proponent of historic preservation downtown and to revitalize downtown as a retail destination. He's also participated in the Landmarks Advisory Commission, the Montiths Historical Society, and Albany's Downtown Association. The Landmarks Commission wants to recognize him for those efforts as well. So now, moving on for real, the second award this evening goes to Mark and Ani Manley in recognition of their instrumental and ongoing commitment in the revitalization of downtown Albany. Over the past many years, Mark and Ani have fully rehabilitated the historic Flynn and Ames buildings on First Avenue. Here's a before and after. This presentation slide shows before and after pictures of one of the Manley's most recent rehabilitation projects that included upgrading the entry stairs to the ballroom to match the entrances of the Flynn offices. And you could also see a picture of the before and after of the ballroom as well. And while projects such as these merit an award in their own right, they do not reflect the full extent and value of the Manley's contributions to downtown or their other efforts, and that's why the Landmarks Commission would like to honor them this evening. So for starters... Hold on, just... Oh, in here. For starters, good stewardship requires ongoing maintenance, and the Manley's have established a comprehensive maintenance program that will preserve the integrity of the historic Flynn and Ames buildings. Then there's the fact that restoring the Flynn and Ames buildings, the value of doing that extends beyond the historic resources themselves. The Manley's rehabilitation efforts have resulted in new business tenants, a venue for weddings and other events, and serve as a catalyst for other property owners and businesses to invest in the downtown center that we have for shopping, dining, and entertainment. Lastly, the Manley's contribute to downtown Albany in a variety and diverse ways. For instance, Mark has also coached and assisted downtown businesses as his role as the director of the small business, as Lynn Benton County's College Small Business Development Center. So for all of these reasons, the Landmarks Commission would like to honor you with an award this evening. So Mark and Ani, would you please come up and receive your award?
Albany is so blessed to have a visionary... Oh, Albany is so blessed to have a visionary mayor and council, and awesome staff that makes great partners, great place to do business. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, Mark. Yeah, no, we are so appreciative of all you've done. That was a huge project that you took on. Took many years, but we always love Mark's story and Ani's. When they moved here and they saw that Albany was investing in their streetscape on First Street, they thought this was a building to invest in because when you've got your local government looking out and investing in our infrastructure, you know the local government cares about someone else's investment.
Yes.
And it's just an actual, you know, prime example of what you did because that sparked all the other investment on First Street and through the downtown. So we're very grateful for you two.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations. Slight advance on me. So for this... Just one moment, let me find my place. For the last award of the evening goes to the Montiths Historical Society for their outstanding leadership in cultural preservation, cultural heritage and historic preservation. The historical society operates the Montiths House Museum, maintains the house, and owns and manages the collection of artifacts in the house. And the work involved by the board and its volunteers cannot be overestimated or overstated. Preserving and maintaining a historic house, especially a historic house that's open to the public, is no small undertaking. This presentation slide shows some of the work that the Montiths Historical Society has undertaken in the last few years. As you can see, in 2011, the balcony was repaired. There was new paint to the balcony in front of the building. In 2012, this year, just in this year, the chimney was repainted, a new roof was added, several windows were reglazed, an energy audit and heating improvement was completed that has drastically reduced the energy costs of the buildings, and the list goes on. And as this presentation slide shows, the operating House Museum means more than passively opening the doors to the public and visitors. The Montiths Historical Society sponsors tours. In coordination with the Albany Visitors Association, they provide living history demonstrations, curates the House collections, and provides a number of educational activities in coordination with local schools. The Montiths Historical Society will be the first to point out that their work is accomplished in partnership and with the assistance of the City of Eugene, other community partners, local... I mean, City of Albany, local... See, there you had it. I think our IT guy said, you know, every time, there's going to be one nephew. There's mine for the, you know, decade. So back to their accomplishment, they'll be the first to acknowledge that their work is accomplished through the assistance of community partners, volunteers, and benefactors, and foundations. But tonight, we're here to honor the Montiths Historical Society Board, its docents, and its volunteers for making it all happen. So with no further ado, I will invite Montiths Historical Society President up here, Chet Hauser, to receive his award.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our award presentation this evening. But before I go, I want to give a special thanks and acknowledge the work of the Landmarks Advisory Commission. The commissioners are appointed as volunteers, and the expertise, time, and commitment they offer is a tremendous asset in the community, and it's really the cornerstone of the City of Albany's historic preservation program. And I only see one commissioner here, but we have our president or chair, Bill Riles. Would you like to stand up and be... Before I leave? Thank you very much.
Is that it, Shawna?
That's all we have.
Oh, I want to thank you so much, so... And thank you for, you know, being a part of this program. So it's a wonderful historic preservation. We really value it, and it's what really generates a lot of our tourism for Albany. So that's our big main attractor. Anybody can really go to any community, you know, across the nation to visit for, you know, a place to visit and tourism, but you can't replace certain historic buildings, and that's a big attractor for tourism. So we're proud of that in Albany.
And me, that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And also the Montiths Historical Society. You guys have been able to keep that house going for many years. We're very grateful, you know, that we know the City of Albany is actually the deed and the owner of the house, but Montiths Historical Society has picked up to be able to operate that off of volunteers and donations, and we are very grateful for all of your service to the community and to be able to keep that proud asset that we all, you know, are proud of in Albany, a beautiful asset. So thank you so much, yeah. Thank you. So thank you, Bill, also, for your service on landmarks. Okay? Okay. Any questions, council? Okay? All right. Thank you, folks. Okay. Next on the agenda is a proclamation for Older Americans' Month, and this is for May 2015. Whereas the City of Albany includes a thriving community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations. And whereas the City of Albany is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives in the communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas, since 1965, the Older Americans Act has provided services that help older adults remain healthy and independent by complementing existing medical and health care systems, helping prevent hospital readmissions, and supporting some of life's most basic functions, such as bathing or preparing meals. And whereas, these programs also support family caregivers, address issues of exploitation, neglect, and abuse of older adults, and adapt services to the needs of Native American elders. And whereas, we recognize the value of community engagement and service in helping older adults remain healthy and active while giving back to others. And whereas, our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, and ensuring that community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim May 2015 to be Older Americans' Month in Albany, Oregon, and I urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to the community. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this thirteenth day of May 2015. So, and this came from Cascade West Council of Governments, our Senior Services Disabilities Program that we are a supporter of for many years for senior services in our community, and we really appreciate all the services that they do provide for the elderly in our community. Okay. That's it for proclamations. And also, council, I think you did have in the handout, you had a lot of activities for Preservation Months, so I hope you were able to read that and see how busy our historic preservationists were in promoting our history. Okay. Next is business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Okay. Not seeing anyone. All right. Then, council, on page nine, you have an ordinance, and this one is over the Airport Advisory Commission. Would you like our city attorney to do the first reading?
Sure.
Okay? All right?
An ordinance amending, ordinance number 5730 and AMC Chapter 2.26 to revise and clarify the power and duties of the Airport Advisory Commission.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance to be read a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending, ordinance number 5730 and AMC Chapter 2.26 to revise and clarify the power and duties of the Airport Advisory Commission.
Make a motion for approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? Yep, Dick?
Ray.
Oh, Ray, or...
Rich.
I second it. Rich did the second. Yeah. Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. Any question? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs. Okay, motion carried. All right. And next is adoption of a resolution. This one is on page 16. And do you have any questions of the fire chief? I think he's here on this item, or I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Oh, huh?
At the suggestion of a city council member, I thought maybe I'd do just a real quick explanation of what it is the council is being asked to consider. This is a grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to help fund some positions. In the fire department, we have received this grant in the past. It's a short-term measure to try and help deal with a long-term need, so it creates some issues because of that, but it's certainly been beneficial to us in the past, and we think it would be useful for us, again, for a limited period of time into the future.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay. Next is on page 18, and this is what we had an update on this from Ann Catlin, last meeting over the action plan for CDBG funding, and then it was left open for a public hearing. And Ann, did you want to come forward? I think you said there was nobody that commented or sent.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The public comment period closed after your last meeting, but we did not receive any further comments, so the plan is intact and ready to go unless you have any questions. And then could authorize me to submit it to HUD? That would be good because it's due Friday.
So I think what needs to be done is we need to make a motion, which is a three-part, so it'd be for adopting the resolution, authorizing to sign it, and then for staff to submit it to HUD.
She'll move.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, Ann, too. I know this has been a lot of work through the commission that put in a lot of thought for the action plan, and you have so much compliance to have to deal with for this plan, but thank you for your wonderful job you've done on it. So, thank you. Okay. Next is a resolution. This is on page 60, and this is setting rates for fire department, I believe it was. Do you have questions of the chief on this one?
Again, I can give a quick explanation. This was a proposal. We've had issues of charging for private water lines that serve fire suppression systems in buildings around the community. It's been a problem for Public Works to try and administer it. The primary benefit of it actually accrues to the fire department in the sense that it provides additional protection to buildings that could potentially pose a fire threat and be difficult to put out. And so the proposal is to have the fire department sort of assume responsibility for the program and also to receive the revenues for it to fund a position that would then be able to go out and actually inspect these systems to make sure that they're working properly.
Okay. Is there questions?
Is that reflected in the budget we're looking at tomorrow night?
Should... I'll let Chief Brander speak to it, I believe.
I know you haven't had a chance to explain your budget yet, but...
Yeah, tonight's the... Or, excuse me, tomorrow night's the budget presentation, and at this point in time, it is not reflected in the actual budget. So the fees would be acquired from this would be in addition to the budget that we're presenting tomorrow.
But if we approve this, when would it take effect?
It would take effect July 1st in the new fiscal year.
Very good. Thank you.
There's any more questions, or there's a resolution on page 60?
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you.
Could we get some clarification? Mary, was this the additional... I got confused.
There's a resolution on the dais. There are only... The only change from the one in your packet and the one on the dais is a change of the number in the title.
But given that the motion referenced, I think, a page number for clarification, the record should reflect that we're in fact you are adopting the resolution that was separately on the dais.
Yes. Just want to clarify that this is adoption of the resolution that is on the dais. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next is adoption of the consent calendar, and is there any items that you need to have hold off this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of consent calendar.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is award of bid, and this is for the Cleveland and Denver Street Water Lines. This is on page 107. And is there questions, staff? Any words from staff?
Real briefly state here, we opened our bids on April 21st for this Cleveland Denver Water Line project. There were four bids submitted. It ranged from $371,823 to $450,786. The engineer's estimate was $344,000. We are recommending that council award this contract amount of $371,823 to the low bidder, which is specific excavation of Eugene.
All right? Yeah, Bill?
I remember at the work session Monday, Stacy was mentioning why some of these things come in over bid. But I think it's also curious to note that the spread between one and two is, you know, right around 2% and same between two or three. So it does reflect the market. That's, you know, good bidding, good tight bids, and just circumstances beyond the city's control. So everybody's... In my world, as we say, everybody's looking at the same job.
Will these increases, as you mentioned, are going to be probably coming down the factor? Are those going to be reflected in the budget we're planning now, or is this going to come out of the revised adopted budget that we go through each time? How are those going to show up?
Make sure I understand your question. So in next year, in our proposed budget, we've done our best to project what costs will be at the time that we go forward in bid. The actual costs that we're seeing here on our bids, when we do our proposed budget, we try to estimate what's happened since we did the original budget a year prior and try to adjust for that in this, how much we're going to spend this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
Constant moving catch-up target.
It is. It is constantly moving target that we're trying to catch up to.
Okay.
I move the award of bids as requested on page 107.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is on page 111, and this is to appoint Kathy LaSueur to Landmarks Advisory Commission. And this was a... I believe she's replacing Oscar Holt that was on, on that commission. Okay? So I'll entertain a motion.
Move appointment.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Next, we have really cruised through this agenda this evening, and business from the council. Bill?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Dick?
Yeah, our study session, I had to leave early. I was kind of thinking about that, and I didn't understand completely. We're talking about changing our ordinance on allowing cannabis medical marijuana shops within 300 feet of residential and also changing the ordinance so that one of our shops will no longer be within a legal distance from residential. When we change our planning ordinances or regulations, do we usually grandfather in people who, A, before we changed our rules?
Yes, but this is not a land use ordinance.
Okay.
But as I understood it, the council, of course, has the discretion, and I thought it was the proposed direction, to make the change, if the council elects to make one, prospective only, so that it would have a similar effect of grandfathering in, if you will. But it's not... What we call grandfathering in the land use world is actually a non-conforming use. This is not grant formal non-conforming use status. It just does not make it a violation of the law for them to operate at that location.
I was asked about that, and I wasn't sure exactly what decision we had come to, and I was hoping that was the case.
Well, you haven't made a decision yet, and that is an unusual action with regard to what is actually a criminal regulation, but I think you can do it.
I hope we do.
Anything else, Dick? Okay. All right. Rich?
I was reading some invitation for bid, and I got ahold of Jeff regarding some replacement of laterals on people's property when they are leaking or infiltrating water. And it was explained to me that when we change where the pipe is, that we should foot the bill for that, and I agree. I mean, the landowner did not demand that we change the place where the pipe is. When it is a situation where your own lateral on your property is leaking and the thought process is to have us replace the lateral or fix the lateral, however that is, at our expense instead of the customer, instead of the landowner's expense, because we then don't have to treat water that's there, I mean, it... What bothers me is that is people's own pipe, and it is, you know, my responsibility on my property. I'm not going to tell you I object to the idea because, well, we are saving some money in not having to treat a whole bunch of water that would infiltrate into the sewer system. However, it is in fact the homeowner's problem that we are fixing, and the homeowner is getting away with not having to do their own maintenance. I guess, while I understand the situation and I recognize that there's kind of a no-win situation here, it bothers me that some places, because people had a product that didn't work very well and is now defective, that we are footing the bill for that, but we don't foot the bill for other people when they have a problem elsewhere. I just, I wanted to express my concern and/or angst that this is the situation as it exists.
Okay. Dan Floyd?
Well, this is one time I'm going to disagree with Rich. I've been involved in that program over 20 years in multiple municipalities.
I've been involved in that program over 20 years in multiple municipalities, and it does two primary things. When you reduce that infiltration and inflow, you effectively are reducing the demand on the treatment plant, and you're buying capacity.
Understand that.
So that's a reasonable purchase, when you're buying capacity instead of having to expand the treatment plant. The second issue is, when you reduce that water going into the system, not only reducing the amount that we might have to treat, but we're also reducing the amount that overflows to the Willamette and the Calicoia. So we're under regulatory constraints about reducing those overflows, and if you can get the, what's called INI, out of the system, that is probably the cheapest way to get the water out of the system that we can have in addition to replacing our old worn-out pipes. So when I was employed by the city, we brought that program into effect. Many of those service lines are 50 to 100 years old, and their old Orangeburg pipe, it's not a matter of the pipe being defective, it's a matter of the pipe being worn out, and it's plugged, and it's in the backyard, and our sewer lines are generally in the backyard, and we make more friends by having that program than by ignoring it and having them having to do it. So I think it is a very cost-effective way to help manage our wastewater collection system.
I understand exactly what you said, but if we're going to make friends, could you come and make friends by repaving my parking lot? Because, well, after all, that's something that is my responsibility that's wearing out as time goes on. I understand, and the difference is that it's the homeowner's responsibility ultimately, and I don't see a easy way to have the homeowner do it because we don't know whether or not it's leaking unless we inspect it. But that doesn't mean that it doesn't bother me when we have to pay for it, because it's the homeowner's problem.
And the difference is, your failing parking lot does not directly impact the facilities of the balance of the city. Failing service line does impact the balance of the city.
Just for a thought, Rich, every city I've worked for has had some form of lateral replacement program for the reasons, some of the reasons that Floyd has mentioned. You know, there's certain costs that, as Floyd pointed out, occur as the result of having a sewer system, and, or a water system for that matter. And the council, in the past, has made decisions that have recognized that, like when we compensated the fellow at the box factory when the water line broke. It's a similar kind of situation, and oftentimes, people, most people, when they buy their homes, don't get out and inspect their sewer laterals. I know we replaced one in one city where I worked, where somebody, at some point when the house was probably built, their idea of a sewer line was they strung together old coffee cans, and that was how the sewage was running, and which needless to say, produces not only an infiltration problem, but also an exfiltration problem. So you cure not only the potential for getting stuff into your system, but, you know, that you don't want there, but also stuff getting out into your groundwater that you don't want as well. So there are, on the other hand, there are cities that don't do it, that just say, yep, it's the property owner's responsibility, and it's up to them, but I just think it's, from a, sort of a business standpoint, it's just good value for all of us who live here in the city to be able to have a program like that, rather than just saying, hey, this is strictly a private property responsibility.
Clarification, that when you're talking about the lateral, you're only talking about the piece that comes to the main line, it's not their whole line to their dwelling.
It is the whole line to their house.
All of it to the...
All of it.
Because I thought when we had that program was more pertaining to some of the historic homes, so they would be able to kind of fix those leaky, so...
Yes, it is.
Historic homes are probably the primary beneficiaries because they probably have the oldest lines.
I know. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so...
But, you know, just as, we probably talk this more than anybody wants to, but in my house, for example, I have a relatively new home. I'm never going to really see any benefit from this program in all likelihood, but I still think it's a good idea because it helps cut down my costs of maintaining the system overall.
Yeah. But now, it's more cost-effective because they can do that pipe bursting, isn't it, compared to, you know, mostly when it comes to the main lines that are in backyards, you can go through and pipe burst it instead of digging up a backyard.
When the conditions are right, yes.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah. That's, that's good. Okay.
Hey, well, we've used way more time than I thought we were going to. I was going to say, gee, this bothers me, and it seems to bother other people different ways.
Never mind.
Maybe your sewer line will fail before mine does.
I doubt that.
I voted for this originally, but I still haven't benefited from it, so. Maybe ought to be crossed.
Okay. Anything else, Rich? Okay, Ray?
Received a nice thank you card from Mark Shepherd, which I brought to share. Started passing it down. Anybody wants to glance at it, feel free and move from there, so.
Yeah. So he's had one week, is it? One full week, or...
Since the first...
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, that's great.
Yeah, read it online. He might see that, too, then, huh?
Yeah. Uh-huh. So, so I can read it. Counselor Kopczynski, thank you for the, I have to put my glasses on, kind words at the Carvallos Council meeting. It was so nice of you to come over to Carvallos. I want to also thank you for attending my farewell party at the Public Works Operations. I am learning a lot and working hard to get up to speed here. Thanks again, Mark.
And it was Mark who?
Yeah. Mark Shepherd.
How quickly you forget.
And he will work hard. He will work very hard, so. Yeah. Well, thank you, Ray. That was nice. But thank you for attending, so. Okay. Floyd?
No.
Okay. And also I have is the letter. It's in front of you on the dais, and this is what you gave direction on Monday's meeting to advocate for funding for our Cascades train service for Amtrak, and this would be going to our legislators and for the Joint Committee on Ways and Means, and so if you would like to formally endorse that.
Move that we authorize the mayor to sign the letter and forward it on to the Joint Committee on Ways and Means.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Well, written letter.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thanks to Marilyn. So I ended up getting her to order it. Did Wes do it? Oh, Wes did it.
I just put the address on it.
I was just like, I didn't have time. So, thank you.
Still a well-written letter.
Okay. That was it for me. How about you? Did you have anything?
I would just like to take this opportunity to introduce a visitor we have with us tonight. Sugeng Hattento is a planner from Saimaring City in Central Java in Indonesia, and he and a colleague are here for the next, about a week and a half or so, through the 29th, I believe it is, and have been here a little over a week, learning about how we do business here in Albany, and have really enjoyed their presence. I had the opportunity to take them to Crater Lake, which just gave me an excuse to go. It was Sugeng's first exposure to snow, which was, for me, worth the trip, and we're just delighted to have him here, and of course, I think, as the council is aware, our planning manager, Bob Richardson, will be going to Cambodia in July, I believe it is, as part of this exchange program that's sponsored by the U.S. State Department.
Uh-huh. So, welcome, welcome. And we'll be meeting, I think it's on my calendar, Tuesday. Yes. So, looking forward to that. But, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Wes, staff have anything? So Marilyn, big pickup?
Big pickup a Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00, or, yeah, 9:00 to 11:00 at operations.
Did you get more people to sign up?
Nope.
No? Oh, it'll be an interesting one, so. Okay. All right. With that, we have a work session is May 18th. Regular session's May 27th, and with that, we adjourn. Thank you, folks.